All right. Thank you, everyone. Everyone got a little bit of a break and got some people coming in and out, but we'll keep moving forward. So we will move on to RC 17 health. I see our good friend Alicia Kasucci there. Good afternoon, Alicia. Thank you.
Hi.
Adjusting the schedule a little bit, so thank you. And just again, from our perspective, a big thank you to all that you and the nursing team and the health professionals are doing. I know it's never ended, never ending. It's 24 by seven. And just thank you for all that you and your team are doing to keep our kids at school, keep our kids safe. So much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to, I wanted to actually thank you guys for your continued support as we continue to navigate this pandemic. It just feels like it's never ending. Maybe, maybe 2022 will be our year, but I'm here to present the health budget. And usually, this is my sixth year of doing this. Usually, there's not many changes, but this year you'll note that we have moved several nurses, four full-time employed nurses from RC 17, from RC 24 to RC 17. And the reason we made this shift is because we would like the budget to reflect that the nursing staff, you know, we, we all work together. And we base our staffing on student need at each school, not based on whether they're a special education student or a regular ed student. So we would like to have the budget reflect that all the nurses are under one, one budget line item. And then we also added, took the sub-budget that was in RC 24 and added that to my sub-budget in RC 17 to reflect the subs that may be needed to cover those nurses over the course of this school year. And then the other big change is we have, based on student need, we've, we've had to add a one-to-one LPN to help, to help out with the student. And we anticipate that that support will be required going forward. And so those are the big changes. I don't know if you have any questions for me?
Great. Thank you, Alicia. I will open it up for board questions. Mrs. McCammon.
Just a comment to thank the administration. We've heard from various members of the community and up here at the table a couple of different times, the desire for things to sit where they, where they, when we have, we try to serve all of our students. And so it's nice to see when we have a professional serving all of our students that sit in the RC of source. So thank you for making that change.
Thank you, Mrs. McCammon. Any other, Mrs. Ackman?
So to that point, I understand the, the move. My only question would be if people start to look at staffing year after year, I guess it will then be up to the administration to identify if there's shifts in staff, what was necessary due to IEP and what was necessary for regular health staffing.
Point. Thank you. Any other questions? I'm looking for Mr. Brown, Mrs. Worm. I don't see any hands up there.
All good.
Good. Thanks, Dave. Any other board questions or comments? I will open it up to Board of Finance. Any questions with respect to RC 17 health?
Nothing.
None for me.
Thank you both. I will open it up to RTM F and B. Jack?
Nothing.
Thanks, Jack. RTM Education, Ed?
Yep. One member, I guess, asking for clarification on 41003. So this is one nurse who works full-time with one student. Is that right?
Is it?
Yes, that we have a need for a one-to-one nurse, if she's an LPN, who works directly with one student who has some complex medical needs requiring supervision at all time.
Okay, Ed?
Yeah, I think so. Yep.
Thank you though.
Yes, sure.
So on that point, how does this help us track our special education costs? Or as board members, could we just flag what RCs now we're going to have to pull from in terms of tracking special ed? I mean, I understand the move under the theory of all nurses together. I also, if we want to know the cost to special education, we now have it spread throughout RCs. So how should we conceptualize that as board members if we're trying to track expenses?
Can I ask a related question? Do we really need to do that? I mean, I understand that, that there's some convenience in understanding, but special education is so many different things. It's different educational modalities. It's sometimes complex medical needs. And these are really, because they're really individual student needs, we don't have a lot of control over it. And I don't know that tracking the, the needs of a child who's, and I'm asking, who's tracking the needs of a child who's mildly dyslexic and a child who's severely medically impaired and requires a significant suite of services? I don't know that as a board, knowing that those two are in the same bucket provides us any particular clarity in terms of how we operate, though I still think we need to know the information that we have all these different populations.
So I'd love to hear from the administration. My question is, you could then make that argument, and, and I actually agree, I think you and I agree from an educational standpoint that you could put special education in throughout all the RCs because they're just our students and we meet our students' needs. We have RC 24, I think, sometimes for tracking of excess cost and things like that to try to figure and plan forward. I am not opposed to it. I'm just trying to understand as a board member where now to look if we're still having an RC called special education. That's all. I mean, philosophically, I 100% agree with you. Our students are students and I'll meet their needs wherever they are. But we pulled out nurses. Why not any other service?
Yeah, currently you're, you're correct. If it, if it applied for access costs or otherwise, it would show up as our tracking of our access costs. But under this, yeah, yeah, it's not being split or anything. So doesn't seem to be the best I'm trying to give you. But at this point, again, if it's special education and has an access cost attached to it.
Mine, please.
May I just, may I just add, Dr. Adley, may I just?
Sorry. Thank you. Sorry, Jack. Thank you very much, everybody. If it was, if there's a special education student involved in it and required access cost, it would show up as we track, as we normally do our access cost applications. At this point, it's shown here as a right, for the most part, yes, it shows up as a regular education nurse. Shirley?
Yes, Doctor. I was just going to comment also that we do track those services for access cost. I don't think that answers all of Ms. Ackman's question, but we do track it on access cost.
Yeah. So, so let me be clear what I'm asking. And, and there might not be a great answer to it. It might just be a shift in the budget book that I'm flagging for committees and members that in some areas, the administration has now chosen to generalize them as student need, regardless of state classification. So therefore, we should just be aware of that as we track ongoing costs, or as we then say, our special education is so much of the budget, of which I've never thought is particularly effective way to do it, but we do do things that way. We should just know now those expenses are diffused among other RCs. So maybe it's just a point of clarification to flag as we start to then look at pie charts or this or that.
Okay, to see how it all consolidates.
Sorry.
Thank you. No, thank you, Mrs. Ackman. You missed McCammon. Good points. We were at RTM Education. Ed, did I catch you?
No, no, nothing.
Okay, good. Thank you. CDSP?
We just wanted to say thank you to the nursing staff, our continued thanks.
Thank you, Lori. CPAC?
Hi, just of course, thank you too, but also thank you for making the change in the RC from 24 to 17. It's something we've brought up in the past.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, I'll open up to the public.
There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you. We'll move on to RC 22, Technology Education. Who is Joan? Hey, Jeff.
That's actually.
That's Greg.
Okay, great, sorry.
Thanks, Greg.
I could, I was going to say good morning, but we're already right through the afternoon. So
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. And I'd just like to thank administration and the Board of Education for continued support of our department and, and the growth of our department as well. Our budget is very similar to last year. A couple of line items are a little bit higher, a couple of line items are a little bit lower, resulting in about a 4% decrease overall. That decrease can be contributed into the general teaching supplies for two reasons. One of those reasons being just a lumber is a kind of a large cost of the general teaching supplies budget, excuse me. And we've just been, from a manufacturing standpoint, really having the kids focus on efficient use of materials and a cost of waste. So that's helped bring some of our material costs down, as well as we've had, we walked into this year with a lot of materials left over from last year that we were unable to use. So as of this year, that number has dropped down a little bit. Next year, that may go up depending on our utilization of materials. The periodicals budget has gone up, I think about $300 or so, and that could be attributed to a proposed new course for sports marketing. There is an ad weekly that the teacher requested, and that's about $315. And our other business teacher is requesting a subscription as well for about somewhere around $200. So there's the increases from that. There is a professional development, an increase there just because of the added member of our department. And again, we've been looking at giving professional development opportunities for everybody in the department, which is now 10 total members of our department in both the fall and spring semester, and that has been working out pretty well. We've utilized some of that in the fall and hopefully to utilize the rest of that coming this, this spring. And that could be online registration certifications. We've done some off-site stuff too, through CES in the fall, and hopefully to continue that if we could do some in-person professional development in the spring, moving forward. For replacement equipment, and this is part of our continued five-year plan, I've been trying to replace older equipment that has reached its lifespan in the department, and it was originally purchased with the building. We've done some of that this year. And the request for next year is to replace one of the older table saws that we have. It's been hard to find parts for it because they're no longer manufactured. And the, the ergonomics of this machine is just really big and for shorter kids to kind of reach over and use it properly, it just hasn't been a really great machine. So I'm looking to replace that with something that's a lot safer and something that will give us a long lifespan. So it is an industrial cabinet saw and it is, has a saw stop technology. If you're familiar with it, it's something that has a safety mechanism in it that if it comes in contact with skin, there's a break in the actual blade and, and it drops below. So it reduces potential injury as well. And that's about it.
Greg, thank you so much. Again, such good stuff goes on with all this, these classes in terms of science, engineering, the technology and the a lot of the good old-fashioned woodworking stuff. So thank you so much. Board questions? Looking for, this is Worm, Mr. Brown, I think they'd speak up. Okay. I will open it up to Board of Finance, RC 22, Technology.
Nothing, Duke. Thank you.
Thank you. RTM F and B, Jack Davis?
Nothing, Duke. Thanks.
Thank you. RTM Education, Ed?
No, nothing.
Thank you. CDSP? Lori continues to get her steps in today.
Will the new DHS Tech Ed STEM curriculum offer a new robotics class in 22, 23 to utilize the new robotics equipment that was purchased through the recent robotics grant? Or would it be possible to incorporate robotics into some of the existing Tech Ed STEM classes in order to expose more of our students to robotics STEM learning opportunities?
Thank you, Lori.
Yes, that's actually a great question. And as part of our, our curriculum changes, we're actually transitioning the Principles of Engineering course, proposing, proposing that for next year to incorporate our main focus in that class as robotics. And that's already budgeted into this, the general teaching supplies budget. So we're transitioning, we used to do the fuel cell car, which involves really the same technologies, electrical engineering, mechanical engineering, logistics. And we're transitioning all that and the funding that we used to use to that to a robotics program just to help bring more robotics into the district because I, I know that that is a goal of the, the board.
Thank you, Greg. CPAC?
Nothing. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Michelle, we'll open up to the public on RC 22, Technology Education.
There are no raised hands at this time.
Great. Greg, thanks for spending some time with us and we appreciate all the work that you do.
Thank you.
We'll move along to Technology, RC 15.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hey, Jeff, how are you?
Well, how are you doing? So I'm here to present the budget detail of RC 15. The budget of RC 15 this year, very similar to those of previous years. So I will simply highlight the major changes and then answer any questions that may, may arise. The first major change, looking at page 130, is in line 11044, Technology Support. We are asking for a second technician at the middle school. This technician will be hardware repair specific. His or her main focus will be the repair of the over 7,000 devices that we have in, in the district. And there are a number of reasons for this request. Number one, if you look at page 128, the hiring of a second technician will give the district a device to staff ratio that is more in line with other DRG districts. Number two, we're looking for savings in repair costs. We've already spent over $40,000 this year alone. So we think that bringing repairs in-house will hopefully reduce the overall repair cost. And number three, we'd like to minimize downtime for the students. Doing repairs in-house will mean that the device that is broken will be back repaired into the students' hands much quicker. Second biggest change, software maintenance, 13035. Software normally has a 5% increase built into the budget. Every year, every software manufacturer builds in a 5% increase. However, with contract renegotiations, removal of unused software, this year the increase is only 3.71%. And the listing for all of the software is on page, one, starts on 131. And then finally, new equipment, line 73400. This can be seen on page 135. And just quickly going down the list of hardware to be purchased this year, the Grade 5 Chromebooks to continue our one-to-one program at the elementary level. The, with the introduction of BYOD program at the high school, we will have to outfit a few students with laptops. The elementary view sonic display systems, those will outfit the four elementary art rooms. Obviously, Oxford will, will have one with the new building. The district servers, these servers are, they serve everything at the school level. These are at end of life and now are at end of support. We cannot support these past July of next year. So we do need to replace the server form at the district level. Then we have middle school office desktops. These are simply administrative desktops throughout the building. We have high school teacher MacBook and iPads. These are, these will be the teaching tools for the high school teachers going forward. High school student desktops, these are desktops throughout the high school in labs and learning connection areas that are student-specific. And then finally, we have the middle school Mac lab. We have these, these machines are end of life and are not being updated anymore. So past this summer, these machines may not run any of the software that are, that is on there right now. So we need to get these computers replaced as soon as possible. And that completes the highlights of RC 15. Open to questions?
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate that. I will note up to board.
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff. Jeff, would you mind just talking to the bring your own device? And certainly we can take over once you just sort of frame it, but the idea of the, the change at the high school?
Sure. So the BYOD model now will be that each student will bring his or her own device to school. The device is, it can be any device, can be a PC, can be a Mac, can be an iPad. These devices will be completely secure on our network, will maintain all of our security policies within our network and will be safe and secure for the student. Most, most all software is moving to a web-based model. So therefore, any device will be able to be used in the classrooms at the high school. The old, I can speak to the older, the old iPads. We will recycle half of them. The other half will stay in district. We will maintain carts of iPads for teachers who do request it at the high school level. We will also maintain the carts for testing purposes. Students still cannot test on personal devices. So we will maintain a bank of iPads for all sorts of testing.
Thank you. All right, Jeff, thank you. Dr. Adley, you want to add to that? In terms of the bring your own device, the only thing I would ask is, since a lot of people look at our book here on page 135, is devices for students without a device due to bring your own device, just clarify that this is specific to the high school, right? The BYOD program?
Yes.
So, all right. Anything you want to add, Dr. Adley?
Yeah.
This is, I think, I think prior to getting into questions, you can add to it. Jeff's already presented on the bring your own device. And then I know the board and our partners will have questions.
So I recognize that this may pose like a small P, practice or policy discussion again, right? And while I'd like to try to avoid those major discussions at, at the budget sort of process, some of them are just invariably necessary and are hard, are hard to avoid in that regard. Look, this was put in place 2015, 16. We had this sort of study and then over, over the years, it's sort of been rolled out, rolled out. It hasn't been rolled out even completely at this point with pens and, excuse me, the new iPads. The board itself has had rigorous discussions about this matter, right? And we felt that now was a time to take a pause, particularly, particularly after COVID, after some of the learnings. If, in fact, we were going to make a change, that now would be the appropriate time to make the change. I, I believe that the investment that have been done in the iPads and in the actual experience has been well-served. And we've learned a lot from that particular experience. Issues that the board has discussed and that we have discussed administratively and also with the staff at the high school were just in a wee bit of a different place. Part of it was also to clarify and qualify, where are we in our implementation of it? Is it actually happening as we are expecting it to happen, right? And, and should be happening in terms of full implementation. The reality is, right now, our students during COVID use all their own devices at the high school primarily. They use their own devices at home. I'm sure, I'm assuming some people have several different devices at home that they've been using or that they have. So feedback from the staff too, is that, you know, the student, particularly at the upper levels, 11, 12, we're not using the iPads as much as we might ordinarily, perhaps the plan now call for. So instead of continuing to make investment in that, we looked at, is there another opportunity to do differently? And we felt this is now a good time to make the, the transition to bring your own device where a student can bring their own device. Most of, most of the students, not all of them, will bring Macs of some description, but that's not, that's not necessarily the commitment that's necessary. The safety, security, hardware, software oversight has been reviewed. But will that support those devices? Are we going to need more staff to do this? So on, so forth. It does save money. That was not the reason to do it, started, right? So the net savings is over $200,000. But it is an opportunity to take a wee bit of pause and just look at, before further investments are made in it, is this a time to actually just do a wee bit of reflection on it? I mean, I'll say, I certainly felt that it was a time, and the ministry team felt it was a time to just take a wee bit of pause, work with the high school staff, review where we are, recognize where we are, where we're not, recognize the learners that our kids have had and the experiences that have happened since. And this is the recommendation that we're putting before this particular description of a one-year, one-to-one. The investment in Apple TVs will not be wasted because we'll be using those. The teachers will be using their, their MacBooks and iPads and their pens to actually do the instruction through that. So that is, that is not training, resources are otherwise that is lost. Jeff talked about different carts being used for different classes. There may be a class or two that still want a cart to use for iPads for a particular reason. So that's okay. We can still, we can still use it in that capacity. So that's, that's the tenet of it. I'm happy to, to open it up for questions from there, but the intent is that the high schools would be bringing, the high school students would be bringing their own devices. We have budgeted for students who cannot afford to bring their own device for whatever reason, as we would do for anything. Any other thing that they would need for school, whether it was athletics or going on a trip or otherwise, we, we put in a, a budget number for really around free and reduce, free and reduced lunches as a guideline. So with that, I'm happy to.
And then as Jeff mentioned, there's a need to maintain cards for testing requirements?
Yes.
And is there, where are they in the replacement cycle and the age? We don't see anything, nothing this year, but I think you don't have to answer that right now, but that's going to be a continued.
I think down the line that eventually the, the SAT and so on, we're going to transition away from that.
Okay.
But that's not the case right now, but.
Okay. So with that, I'll open it up to board questions and comments. Mrs. Parent?
Thank you. I just have a question about the affordability factor of this. If we're going to use free and reduced lunch, it's a very small percentage of our population that qualifies for that. I can imagine that there are some families that don't qualify for free and reduced lunch, but buying a $1,000 or $2,000 MacBook is a significant challenge. Is there, and I know Mr. Adams said that most of, if not all, is web-based and you could buy a $200 Chromebook or whatever and be, and be able to do what is needed. Is, will there be a minimum requirement of what your device is, needs to happen?
Yes, we would, I'll have to get an answer, but we, we, we would have to put out just a sort of minimum requirement that, for the most part, most of the access to the tech, the developed technology now would, would, would actually provide, but there would be a minimum thing we would have to share with the, with, with parents. Jeff, if you want to qualify that, you can. I remember he doesn't.
No, he's, sorry.
No, no, that's absolutely, that will be the case. We will, we will put standards out there as, as we, as we go forward.
Mrs. Best?
So to clarify, students will need to have a device in the classroom at DHS. They'll, they'll need one in order to participate in the school day.
Yes.
And then they'll be expected to provide their own, to potentially have to buy two or three of them, depending on how many students they might have in the high school, just to play out that, those finances there. Um, I had a question. There are a number of items outlined in Strategy 7A of the strategic plan. And I don't know if we had gone through all of those, or if this is one of those cases where we're going to revisit the strategic plan and adjust. But a number of things regarding ensuring strategic utilization of technology to enrich support and inspire teaching and learning. And you, Dr. Adley, did just mention information on students using their own devices versus the school-issued devices. I don't know if I've seen that data, but if we do have that data, I would love to see that. Does that exist?
I would say that I haven't met with, we met with teacher representatives, representatives from the Technology Committee, High School Administration, actually all together. Just a casual takeaway, I mean, certainly get even more specific, was it primarily nine and 10 were using predominantly iPads. Some of the other classes, maybe music or otherwise up through the grade, maybe we're using the iPad, the, so the iPad. But the other grade, for the large part, we're not.
Okay. And just for my edification, has there been any consideration of, have we, have we given it the old college try? Is it, is it that we haven't rolled it out as effectively as possible? Rather than it isn't as effective as we would have hoped? Is there any possibility that that's the case? And I don't know that this is the place to have this conversation.
It is, it is. No, it is. It is, yes.
As part of the budget discussion. Okay.
Well, look, the superintendent is changing his position, right? Because I've sat here before the board and said, but it's come to a point now, and if I'm using the time period for the COVID as, well, as was as an opportunity to actually look at, look at what is actually happening and what we're learning from that. But, well, actually, give me the last part of your question, could you, yes, I just, I guess that's the first part.
Do we give it to college, right?
Oh, yes, listen.
Did we roll it out as effectively as possible?
There's at some point, I think, like, you've made an investment, and it's a good investment, and it has been a good investment, it's not wasted by any means. But I do think that, at this point, to invest more, I personally don't feel comfortable investing more, given the way you can say, for whatever reason, that's being implemented the way it is, I'll take responsibility for that, but the reality of it on the ground is, it's not playing out the way we want it to play it out. And I think that the, that going to this model, you, you will get a consensus of implementation nine through twelve from teachers and from staff, from ourselves, to that particular model as opposed to continue to invest in something. Honestly, I can't sit here and advocate for something that I don't now come to have terms to, and I believe in this working as well as it should or might. And so I'm not going to, I'm not going to make that recommendation. So this is the recommendation that they'll be making, and it is with input from high school staff.
Mrs. Worm.
Yes, hi, thank you. Well, for one, I'm actually glad to see us going on to this, bring your own device. I've actually been saying this for the past few years, because I know a lot of kids don't use them, so I'm happy to see the cost savings. Is there going to be a time towards the end of this year that everyone's returning their iPads? And on to the middle school, my question is, I know, I think you said, I don't see the number, but I think you said it was like about forty thousand dollars in repairs during the school year. Do, are we ever looking at the handling of them and possibly charging repeat students that are not taking good care of their property or the school's property and possibly charging a fee for that?
Yes, so we have looked at that. The model in Darian is that the we, we handle the repairs in-house. But if we do start to look at charging the families and, and having their repair costs go external, we have to have somebody to manage that process. And that, again, we don't have that in-house, which would lead to having this second technician. So that second technician would either be doing the repairs or managing the process of repair. So, yeah, we're, we're always looking at trying, trying to reduce costs and, and keep, keep the devices healthy.
Thank you.
This is McCammon.
It seems to me there are two drivers to this change, as I understand it. The first is user habits, which is, we can mandate, but that isn't always easy. And the second is changes in sort of the, the technological infrastructure that have happened in the past number of years. Jeff, could you spend a little more time talking about specifically software and network security? When we first rolled it out as one-to-one, we indicated that people needed to have their own devices because we wanted the ability to manage the network as, as securely as possible, and we didn't want kids doing things we couldn't see. And then the second reason we did it was to make sure that everybody could access the software that we wanted them to access. So I'd love to understand with a little more detail your point about things moving to a web-based delivery model, and then following up on that compatibility. So, you know, if, if a teacher says, I want you to use ABC computer program, we're confident that there's a process that they've gone through so that it works on a Mac, a PC, or a, an iPad. Thank you.
Sure, sure. And, and back in two thousand fifteen, when, when, when this program started, we, we did have to make that conscious choice of what platform to go to. Was it an iPad, was it Chromebook, was it a PC? The high school committee got together and decided the iPad was the way to go. And for the most part, going forward, the applications were, were specific to the iPad. But as software has developed, everything has gone to a general internet web-based platform. And if it's not general web-based, it is written for Android, it is written for Chrome, it is written for iOS. So applications are there across the board. So we're very comfortable in saying, yes, BYOD pro, model will work with the software we have. And in terms of security, we do now have the technology to manage what personal devices do on our network. Back in two thousand fifteen, that was not the case, but we now have it in-house. We have all new wireless access points, our firewalls, our controllers, our switches are all new and all have the capability to manage these BYOD devices. So we're very comfortable in stating that these, these personal devices coming in from students will be safe, will be secure, will be protected.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Senior.
You know what, the, the cost issue and the, this, this happening kind of in one year, if you will, to, to families, I'm wondering if there's another way that we can provide assistance. And, and again, I don't know what the metrics are in terms of what type of device they need, you know, is a simple two hun- I don't even know what a Chromebook costs anymore, but two hundred, two hundred dollars Chromebook sufficient? So back to the question that went to Jeff, but, you know, can we think of another way, or, yeah, another way of offering families assistance in this shift, because, you know, they had expectations that they could get a device if they needed to and not buy one. I, I know the preference is widely to bring your own, but, you know, maybe, maybe think that we can increase the ability to ask for some assistance with a device, not just based on the school lunch program.
So I think to that point, I think it's come up. Have we done, have we talked to the eight graders and do we know the ninth, tenth and eleventh graders? You know, have we done any type of survey about everyone is good with the device they have, or they're going to get a device for birthdays, Christmas and stuff like that? I think that would help John's question in terms of what is, how much assistance we may need to provide.
So the, the frame of justice is only just as, as a guideline, clearly anyone else would do. The same way as we would work with families, just in general, a, a, a better nation, we would certainly work with them on that. But the, the surveys were, that were dumber about the use of technology, so on, so forth, but it wasn't like you have your own device, that wasn't, because I, I wasn't going out for, for a sort of, sort of vote in that capacity, right? I mean, I need to discuss it here at the table first of all.
Okay, and then can I just follow up on my comment?
I wasn't looking, I wasn't looking for a vote.
No, I'm, I'm just.
I'm just saying, nice to have the data, so we know what we're dealing with.
And then just, you know, I applaud the move. I hate using my kids as examples, but I gasped or made a sound when I saw it, and they said, what's up? And I said, no more iPads. And my oldest son said, I could have told you that four years ago. So, and, and that's something we heard reoccurring, you know, since I've been on the board. So, like, listen, you made a, a good move, it's not going to be liked by everybody, but in my opinion, I support it.
Thanks, Mr. Senior. Mrs. Ackman.
Wait, Tara.
Dave, what would I do without you? So I have a couple. I have a couple of questions. First, we don't, based on this budget, we wouldn't necessarily meet the needs of all the people asking for a computer, because we're only purchasing forty. So I guess my first question is, the theory of the administration that's always been put forward to this board when we see budgets is that we provide for students that which they need to access their general education. I'm wondering when that theory changed.
Well, definitely, that's like, there is a definite philosophical decision that I, I don't know if there's a right or wrong with it. Certainly, public education is free, right? So you can certainly take, you certainly take that position, just as we're, we're buying uniforms and so on, so forth ourselves. In some ways, we're, we're banning some of these, we're asking parents to buy these resources. It's not, it's trying not to make that shift, but, but certainly the board could support or not support based on we fundamentally believe that everything should be paid for, you should be paying for anything for athletic, you shouldn't be paying for anything for extracurricular activities and everything that happens in a public school should be free, which, which for the most part, I think we would, we would support in that regard. But it's, again, we're, we've learned a lot, the whole idea about one-to-one, bring your own device has evolved over time, we're not in isolation, nearly every district around us has one-to-one in that capacity at the high school. So that is a decision that comes along with this, we've got like, the moral decisions, so to speak, with open choices, it's not a, I hear.
No, I guess, I mean, look, let me be blunt about this. We just heard a few RCs ago that we're meeting the needs of all of our kids, and we're going to provide what kids need, and then we hear, but we'd like you all to pay for your computers. I don't know that that's necessarily the wrong way to go. What I know is I didn't hear about it in goals and objectives. I know I didn't hear about it in a November kind of major budget initiative. So it seems like the decision was made within a short period of time, and to Mr. Senior, Mr. Dean's point, I don't have a lot of I don't have anything other than kind of anecdotal information to qualify it, but I'm now asking some parents, if you have three kids in the high school, to put out significant money on something that is required, but we've decided to change. And I, that's a major philosophical, so I am wrestling with that all of a sudden as a paragraph in the budget book.
Yeah.
And it reads as if it's an implementation failure, that is contrary to what we've heard. I guess, sorry, Duke, I'm going to get out a few of my points, not just one question.
No, that's fine.
It is contrary to what we've heard, so that also feels like new information. So now we have two new facts in a paragraph. And then third, I would say that what I heard around this table in terms of bring your own was an opt-in or opt-out option that parents could say, you know what, the iPad's working for my kid, or the iPad's not, and that we could, that could help adjust our purchases. This is now, if you qualify for free and reduced lunch, that's very different. So it's, it's some radical philosophy changes that I think I think we need some more conversation on then, well, it's not financial in a high budget, but all of a sudden I've changed my position on it. And it is a major swing in the administration's position.
Yeah, so when I give the, the budget of sort of a negative sort of, we, we first looked, I did flag a discussion about this topic, but nowhere near that this is what's going to happen, right? So, so I, I guess, right, but, but at the same time, I couldn't flag it as I was finalizing or reviewing where we, where we were with it, and some final decisions had to be made. That wasn't the time to actually do that, because that decision wasn't completely made at that particular time. I would, I would ask is just, in context for free and reduce, I'm just using it as a, as a, where did you come up with a budgetly number to dissipate? Now, please don't just, there'll be people who do free and reduce, will want to have, they have their own, and then they won't want any help. And I'm just using it as a frame of action, the party come up with a number to start with the budget. So I would ask that, I'm not saying, nor am I, like, I'm not targeting that group of people, I'm not saying that's a group of people who, if you're asking for, how did you come up with a number for people who may not, who may need assistance, that's just, that's just a number that I use. Implementation failure, I'm just being honest, I don't know about implementation failure, right? Okay, it, it wasn't working the way you said, Dr. Ellie, as the, the implementation of eleven, twelve, okay, that's but it may well also be what actually really transpired over the learning and the years that took place. It evolved that way where it really, it really wasn't planned out at the higher levels as, as the right way to go. And so, I mean, you can say implementation failure, I guess you could say that. I'm just recognizing where we are and being honest about it and saying that I think this is the right time to do it. And yes, it does pose philosophical decisions, questions and decision-making, it does, I recognize that.
So at the moment, we'll still need to keep on hand enough computers for students to do state testing. Correct?
Yes.
And then I guess, sorry, my last one would be, why then are we doing BY, BYOD only at the high school? Why not do it across the board?
Because we think instructionally that it's, it's more appropriate at the high school to do it.
So I would just push on if everything is web-based and everyone can access the same information from a web-based and their device doesn't matter, I would need to hear instructionally why it matters. I mean, maybe I could understand the, our youngest learners, but if everything's web-based and it's just a matter of getting to the website. Sorry, Jeff, that might not be the right term, but you know what I mean, getting to the app and the device doesn't matter, why does the device matter?
I, I, well, there are logistic issues with, with the younger kids, I just think that there's a responsibility, there's, there's a use of it at the high school. It, it's not something I recommend at the moment, I don't think, and, and it's not pervasive to actually have elementary schools, middle schools, bring your own device, that's not a pervasive model in places, but I, I just think that this is we have a change of, of, of model at the high school of the iPad, I'm just looking at the iPad, that, that the Chromebooks are working fine. We, we don't need to change it, have no reason to change that. I have a reason to change the model at, at the high schools because the bring your own device, as the kids get independent, as they're going to go on to college, that's what they're going to do, they're going to bring your own devices, just transition into, to that model at that particular level. Some, sometimes, when you get down to the, the earlier grade levels, it's more structured.
Mr. Brown. Thank you, Mrs. Ackman.
Thanks, Duke. A couple of questions, Jeff, in terms of the recycled iPads, the seventeen-five. Are those, are those at end of life, or is there any value keeping those around to hand out as students who want a device from the district in terms of bring your own device, or, you know, to the kindergartens or other usage? Or are they just, they're done?
No, they're not end of life, we're, we're, we're looking at all possibilities for them.
Okay.
Yeah, that definitely is something we're looking at.
Got it. Other question, in terms of the forty thousand dollars in, in the repairs and the maintenance you're talking about, will we be offering support to bring your own device also, or will we just be supporting school devices?
Well, we'll just be supporting school devices, however, we will offer first level tech support for personal devices. So our techs will look at all, anything that comes in, whether it be a MacBook, a PC, a Chromebook, and if the fix can be made within the school, they will make it. However, if it's something structural, such as a cracked screen, then the, the family will be responsible for it.
And then two quick questions might be slightly outside of budget and, and probably for later, so I apologize, but real quick, what I have you. Do we track what sort of ratios are to repairs versus number of devices? I'd love to know if we go to bring your own device, do we find that not that our students don't take great care of the devices we issue, but perhaps see a trend where that changes? And maybe the bring your owns have less maintenance, and be curious if that's something you can track going forward. Secondly, just to follow up to that, I don't know if there's any tracking done, if there's any correlation between high rates of device failure and, say, midterms, or if that's, you can track, that's purely speculative, thank you.
We do, we do have those numbers. So we, we have everything stored. If things are not fixed in-house, they go directly out to one specific company, so we have all those numbers, so we, we can do an analysis for you. So we, we can definitely continue that conversation.
Thank you so much, Jeff, appreciate it.
Mr. Brown, Mrs. Parent.
Thank you, I just have a couple of concerns, just philosophically, I just feel like if we're asking the district provides textbooks, district provides resource materials. To access education, it seems to me, and then what I'm hearing is that a device is necessary, and that, that shift, struggling with that shift. That we're now asking parents to provide a necessary resource for school. I'm also a little concerned about the equity factor. If you see a student who has a school-issued device versus a student who has a two thousand dollar MacBook, I just worry that there's another, another way to differentiate and maybe target the students. I'm also wanting to have a different thought about doing, you know, easing, to Mr. Senior's point, you know, easing in a little bit, have there been a thought process to opt-in, like, we figure out if there's, how many, how many families would opt into having a school purchase device next year? I know it's, you know, it's a quick turnaround, but I just worry about doing it quickly and then.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent.
Just, just in relation to that, sorry, the, the students who are providing one from school or not provided, they're provided like a MacBook, I think it's Mac, it's a Mac Pro?
Mac Air.
Mac Air, sorry, yeah, a Mac Air. So it's not as if it's going to be, because a lot of students have, have those anyway. And the hybrid, not recommending a hybrid, but I understand why the question.
Sorry, what do you mean by hybrid opt-in?
Uh, which is an opt-in, yes. So I'm getting used to, used to terminology.
Mr. Maroney.
Yeah, so, so I'm kind of the same thought as the opt-in, so I guess my question is, why wouldn't you recommend the opt-in? Since we're going to have four thousand computers or four thousand iPads that are just being set on a cart for general testing that we're not going to be using, why wouldn't we take advantage of fifteen hundred, whatever number we need of those to give to students and families who can't afford, don't want, or whatever the case may be, to Mr. Senior's point of, you know, this is something that sprung out, you know. Duke's point is, you know, they want, they may get it for Christmas or birthday, but if you're Duke's point is, you know, they want, they may get it for Christmas or birthday, but if your birthday is in December, Christmas in December, you gotta go a semester without a computer. So. I'm struggling with this as well. But I, I also have a second point, second question on technician. So we're talking that we have 40,000 in repairs. The salary is 76,000. So I'm struggling with. What is the advantage of bringing it in-house versus not? Because it's half the year, 80,000 is a full year. It's the same cost as doing a salary. And to Mr. Davis's point, you know, we're, we're talking a lot more than 80,000. And secondly, and I hate to compare to other, other dirgs, but the other part that I struggle with as well is that. Even bringing one person in, we're still going to be the highest ratio of all our other dirgs. So we, if we're going to. What's the, I don't, I need to understand the point because to me, if we're going to do this. And it's valuable to get to the dirg average. Then that would be an extra, another one or two people. And trying to understand what the, what the metrics are of why we're bringing someone in, or are we just bringing someone in to say we're even with our dirg?
Mrs. Akman.
Well, Jeff, do you want to, do you want to answer that or?
Yeah, sure. You're right. The 40,000 is a half year cost. So our, we're projecting our, our repairs for the year to be around 80,000. So that, that is a direct trade off, but there are the intangibles that that can be seen, which is you get the devices back quicker. You do have redundancy now because if our tech at the middle school is not there, like nobody to back him up, I gotta take somebody else off of some other school. To, to help out the middle school. So there are, there are intangibles that go along with this. It's not just a direct. Oh, you know, repair costs will be minimized. So. You know, we're not doing it just to say we're in the same ratio as the other dirgs. So. There, there are lots of benefits to that.
Mrs. Akman.
What happens if a family doesn't qualify any kind of, under any economic standard and says they're not purchasing? A device?
We would certainly just try to, try to work with that family in terms of understanding why. Are you jammed for just, like, just to want to buy it or not buy it?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, we've seen it. Like, we got emails where people said, I don't want my child on a device. So what if they say I'm not?
Well, I think, and we've been to service questions in terms of, right now, I don't know. Certainly. Parents or students might select, yeah, well, I, this is too quick for me. I, I might want an iPad. Okay. My guess is most of them won't because they're not at the moment. That's the whole point, right? At this, at the eleventh and twelfth grade year particularly, they're not so that, but if they want one, then I wouldn't rule that out. Completely money wise, it's, well, it's like if you don't bring, excuse me, some materials to school now, well, we're not going to sit to, we're not, we're not going to get into. To a situation where, okay, we're not, we're not putting something in front of them or they need to learn, or they need to learn, then we would have to give them one and then bring, get it back again. I mean, that, that's, it's like, if you bring your, don't bring your pencil to school, you're going to get a pencil. We're not going to say you're not going to get a pencil. We have to do something.
So I guess what, what I feel like we're missing is the same metrics that we were missing last year when people were talking to bring her out. Because what we, last year we heard is no, no, many kids are using it. You're hearing anecdotally that kids are bringing. This year we're hearing. No, no, everyone's bringing their own device and there's actually no measure anywhere. And look, I have a kid who uses their own device. So it, it, it's not as if, but I had another kid who used a school issued iPad all the way through. So I have no metrics, but I'm being asked to make a decision, which is completely in contrast. To the philosophical philosophy of this board for at least the seven years I've been on it. I don't, I don't know what to do. I don't have information. I have ideas.
The, the information that I shared with the board, excuse me, prior to this and the position I took. Was based on the information that I knew at the time and the observations that I made at the time. Having reviewed this. Perhaps more thoroughly, right? And talking to large group of teachers. And specifically face to face, right, about this issue, I've come to a different determination and. I recognize that that's, well, you should have known before, all right, okay, but I wasn't being disingenuous to the board before I was going on. What I, what I believe was happening, what I thought was happening, what I was aware of, but not to the degree that. Perhaps. I was understanding through that observation, but. I'm just at a different place or minister everywhere, this different place with it, like based on, on the information.
Could I just ask, Mr. Tramber, do you think the teachers are prepared curricularly to, to deal with someone who has a PC and iPad and an Apple in a given class?
I would say they're most prepared at the high school because the. The implementation so far from what I've seen, and I've only seen the, our COVID implementation of how the devices have been used. All of the platforms we're using, they can use it on any device. At the secondary level, teachers are more likely to be using instruction in a way where they're not actually teaching. Some of the basic technology skills, they're actually using whatever the software is or the, the platform is for direct application.
Mrs. McCammon.
A couple of comments. I'll start with the technician. I'm fully in support of that position. I think. We are in a new reality and you can't put the genie back in the bottle. We've talked about how much our nurses have been working. But for sure, our technical staff has been working really hard behind the scenes. And I'm fully in support of, of making sure there's enough people to work there. And I think that's an important thing to support personally. In terms of the, the philosophy, I do think there's some precedent for, for us doing this and on the football team. Where there were two different kinds of helmets. I don't know if you guys all recall, and what we ended up moving to was. Maybe John, you can help me with this, but there's some fancy helmet that people were buying privately. And it, we ended up saying, as long as your helmet meets FCX standards. We will provide a standard issue helmet, but you're allowed to bring your own helmet. And what we found was that, that from a user perspective. It was really hard. People didn't want their behaviors changed. They wanted to be able to use the helmet. It was the same thing when we had that Friday vacation before. We ended up having to put Friday vacation before February break because we had thousand students not come to school. I would like to get rid of that Friday, but you know, the fact is our community does what our community does. And so. And then additionally, I think that, I think that. The, things have changed a little bit. The, this is much more like a tool. We, our, our young kids are required to buy pencils, for example. And if, if the best thing for you is the, is the pencil that is recommended by the school system and that's the pencil you buy. But if you need a fatter pencil to adjust your grip or you need something else, you, you buy that. And I think for kids to optimally access their education. It's better for them to be on the platform with which they're most comfortable. So I'm happy to see a school district that helps kids. Particularly at the secondary level where the focus is much more on education and is developmentally a little bit different. I'm happy to see us supporting a variety of devices as opposed to one platform. Though that's me as a board member, I, I know that, you know, developmentally, I'm, I'm. Treating devices differently for my younger kids than I am for my older kids, but I would love to hear from you all. On to Mrs. Akman's point about the difference. Developmentally between an upper secondary and our, our middle school and, and. Elementary school level students. And I think you touched on it a little bit, Chris, that the instruction's a little bit different, but can you expand on that point? Sorry to slam all that in.
No, I, I think at the, the earlier grades you are, you are learning the basic skills on how to use a device. So you're learning the skills of how. And when a teacher's teaching, they can say, you're looking for the icon with the red flag on it, and that's the one you're selecting. When you're at the secondary level and you have a, a Mac versus a Chrome device versus a PC. It doesn't matter what it looks like on their window. The teacher can say, you need to open this application and the student's going to know how to open. The device itself. So when you look at this, how skill development looks. From kindergarten, when you're looking at the SD standards all the way up, they move very much from a how to application. And at the secondary level, students are, are, are most ready to apply. And I would say all the way up through. Through middle school, there's still skills where it's helpful for students to have the same device and. How teachers need to teach and the, the agency students have at the middle school level, it still requires some more step by step directions and. Not as much independence as, as they would need to if they had their own device.
Thank you.
Do you have Tara?
Tara Worm.
Hi, yes, just a quick question. Because we've. I know this is my first year on the board, but you know, I have been at the meetings and we've had this conversation for at least three years now. And every year, there's a discussion of, well, let's do a survey. And we sit here again, having the same conversation, yet there's never been a survey about the usage. It, it seems like a simple, people are looking for the information, how many people are using, how many people aren't. I'm not sure why that hasn't been done.
Thank you, Tara. Go to Mrs. Best.
Thank you. I just, I think it's a compelling point that all of these platforms are now web based and available on any device and. To be perfectly honest, I don't think that I was aware of that before this conversation. So that's helpful information. Where I continue to get stuck though is kind of Jill, if I can use your examples, that. The elementary schools have pencils and the football teams have helmets. And whether or not you opt to. Go with a different pencil or to upgrade yourself to the better helmet. The base needs were being met, which is why.
You do have to buy your own pencils.
Oh, you do have to. Okay, I'm sorry. Maybe the pencil one doesn't fit quite so.
But they'll provide you with a pencil.
Yes, if you don't have one, I'm pretty sure your teacher will hook you up. But sure, I think that. I, I mean, I have a really hard time getting to a place where it's 100% everybody go get your own device for next year because that just seems like. A real big. Change in approach and philosophy.
Mrs. Akman.
So. I, I agree with Mrs. Best. I would like the board to consider. An opt in or opt out. And, and we may, you know, look at that and say that, you know, you need to opt out for four years, right? And so you know, coming in and we can plan our, our buying and spending, but. A football helmet or a vacation day is not really the same of what you actually need to participate in your education. And again. We just said we will meet the needs of all children. We didn't say we're going to meet the needs of all children as written in an IP. We said we're going to meet the needs of all of our students. So I absolutely agree that there are some parents who might say, my child works better on a Mac. And if, as long as we let the district know that so that they don't. Over purchase. Then we're meeting the need of that student and we're meeting the needs of the taxpayers. But if we have a whole group of people who say, you're right, I don't qualify for free and reduced. And I also have three children in the high school and I don't have a couple extra $1,000 budgeted. Just because we've decided to make a change inside of a month at this table. I think we, I think there's a different way. Mr. Senior proposed a different way. I think. Mrs. Best and I are proposing a different way. There's a way to manage this financially. And. Meet the needs of our children, which we say we do. And, and this isn't doing that. And, and I. I would push upon the fact that all of Dargay does this. That's not what my research shows. My research shows they do this in different ways. Any child can check out in District Nine. A computer. It's not an economic issue. Some of the other ones from what they say online look like opt in and opt out. I don't know for sure. And Westport has never done, they, they began their computers in the classroom as bring your own device. So there's a long history there. What we're saying is we're going to have kids K through eight that we're providing a device. And then all of a sudden, eight in, in the high school, we're not. I would really strongly suggest we consider a modification to this plan. Because I really think it comes up against our. Philosophy and to Mrs. Worm's point, we've asked for the data for years and we've never been given it. And I, I just can't make a decision this big without it.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman. Mr. Senior.
I guess, what, Alan, if you could give us a little more color, what, what's wrong with the opt-in plan and what, what am I not seeing here? I mean, you're seeing a majority of, I think, of kids and teachers not using the iPads. And bringing their own devices. So for that few.
That could, it could, it could probably be another option of, but, but, but we wouldn't be purchasing the, a different device for them. They'd be getting the iPads that we have. Yeah.
I mean, that.
But I think, I think if, if I could summarize, again, good. As always, great conversation and a lot of variable points. I think we need to go back to, I'll put it in Duke's simple ease. I think the board would like to see the data. We've asked for the data. I'm not sure why we can't go out to the high school and the eighth graders and, and do a survey, knowing it's going to change. But then to me, the logic of this, it, it should be an opt-in, opt-out to start at least. We can see how it plays out. If it truly plays out to the point of. Most kids bring them, especially in 12th and 11th grade, well, then we'll start to see that data and we'll adjust. Kind of what we're purchasing, but at the end of the day, let's be real. We're not going to deny anyone a computer. If they show up to school without a computer, we may have to lend them one. If I call the school and know that Colby's got the latest greatest, but I'm not allowing her to bring it to school. It's not like we're not going to give her a computer to school. So. What I'm hearing from a board perspective is we'd like to see from the administration, number one, would like to see a little more data. Around all of this, you know, who brings, who doesn't bring and, and really think about an opt-in, opt-out. And I think. From a communication standpoint, that would ease kind of the, the. Nervousness or the challenges that go along with everyone having different devices and bringing them to school. And it just. It, it actually just feels better having an opt-in.
Can I just finish my question though? Like, what is the doubt? Are we, is it a budgetary downside that? I feel like we have all these Macs, I'm sorry, iPads not being used. And if we go and opt in next year. It's not going to be incremental cost, right? Other than not returning these. So, so.
No, it's actually reasonable. I'm not. I would take.
I just want to make sure I wasn't missing something.
It's an unreasonable thing by any means. No, it's, it's something to consider.
And then we'll have the data as we opt in, opt out over the next couple of years, like in the next year's budget, we'll say, listen, half the iPad just sat there. So we don't have to refresh them, if you will.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
But I think it's important to know that we're not buying, you know, the, the iMac Pro for students either. I mean, so.
Well, I think to, to Jeff's point and some of the questions here, and if you want to use the reference to the, to the football helmet, it's like. What's the standard? And as long as everyone knows the standard that their child is getting enables us to deliver the quality education that they're expecting. And then your kid wants to bring whatever the latest whiz bang iPad is that's out there. That's great. They're going to be able to access it too. But at the end of the day. Regardless of the brand or the logo. On the computer, they're getting, they're all getting the same. You know, education, access to the applications. Chris, I appreciate it. My angst over all of this is how does it all work from delivering curriculum? You answered that question. I'd actually kind of like to see and hear more about that at some point, road, not as part of the, the budget cycle. So. You know, I land at, I think if I could sum up. Would like to see the data, knowing that data is going to change, but I think it's a real simple survey that we can get the data on. And then I like. What I'm hearing is a concept of an opt-in. Opt-out type process, especially to start this program in the direction that you're trying to have.
The last point I was going to make, it, it's different than giving everybody an iPad and have it sit at home. Right? For the taxpayer. We're not going to be buying nearly as many devices if we do even have to buy, you know, a, a large amount of devices. That, that was the thing I think that frustrated most of us. That they would sit home as the kids went to school, except for like one day when they were made to use them. So.
You do an opt-in, opt-out, you're automatically buying less than the rollout. So there's only a win for the taxpayer. And it helps us really figure out how this program is going to work. Not in this budget maybe. I don't know. I see you, but, but that smile is a financial smile. And so.
I understand. Can I get just after clarification on the data, right? Because I'm giving you the, the data that I got directly from a large group of. Teachers at the high school. I'm confident that the preponderance is not being used as. That they may have been, being used or maybe you say should have been used at 11th and 12th. It's just where we are right now through our learning. What other data do we need? Like what other data is, is the board looking for to? I went and done the focus group. I felt that I'll go myself.
But I think. What, what is it we're looking for?
I, I would like to see the data you have. If you have that data, but it's as simple as if you have 500 kids, you have. Whatever, 400 kids. In, in 11th grade, how many of them are choosing to bring their own device?
Oh, so, okay.
You're going to eighth grade, you're going down to the eighth graders that have come up to the high school. How many of those kids? In their thought process right now, they're only in eighth grade, are going to bring their own device? I mean, that to me gives me the basic understanding and it validates what you've been telling us about predominantly, they all bring their own devices. But I think. If anything, what I think we all constantly hear, we, this board needs to see the data. Needs to see the analytics around it.
I, I mean, I think it's just as easy as sending, and I say it's easy, it may not be, but sending a, a survey to the incoming. Ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth graders for next year, how many of you would be using your own device?
And again, you're.
For opting in, yeah. How many people would opt, would?
And you have to, you know, you have to think again in the communication. So it's not to stir the, the pot in the community, like we are doing a survey as we go through reviewing. Our program of potentially opting in or opting out or bringing your own device. Would like to know what you would like to do as a student. Mrs. Best.
And just to throw out, it might be interesting to do a quick, you know, pick a Tuesday and a Thursday, start a second period. Have each kid report what they're working on that day. Are you using your school issued device or are you using a device you brought yourself just to have a? I, I understand that, that you did a focus group and got great information, but that wouldn't be the quantitative data and you might get a, an interesting read on what the usage is like. And it might be quite low.
Dave, Mr. Brown.
Thanks, guys. Just another one for Jeff. As we're looking at this, and I guess there's a discussion about coming with a spec, what the minimum is, what, you know, device independent. Whether we look at say Chromebook or Microsoft or Apple. Or some of the other vendors, do we have any buying power, anything where we could say this is a spec and you can buy?
do we have any buying power, anything where we could say this is a spec and you can buy it at school? We'll get a discount beyond what exists from the general student discounts? I don't know if that's anything we've looked into or if we have that kind of buying power.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely look into that. We don't have any right now. But they exist out there. We, we will, we will get what's available.
Awesome. Thank you, Jeff.
Yep, absolutely.
Mr. Brown, thank you. I mean, that's a question that's been in the back of my head. And I think that's, it's a nice thing to bring to the table as part of this plan, that we or we and other districts have a buying consortium that if need be, and you want to go get your own device, you know, here's a mechanism to do it. So, which is what most colleges and universities do. Mrs. Augman.
So a little different take on this. If I understand the narrative correctly, teachers are also going to be scheduled to receive their laptops, an iPad, and I think you said a crayon and a pen. Do they need all of that? I see Chris saying yes. I'm just trying to understand why, like, do they have little tech shelves in their room?
Explain it, but yes.
The iPad Pro becomes their teaching device because it's what will sync and what they can use to interact. Because what they have at the high school is a projection type of a system. So they're writing on their tablet in order to write on the board. And the laptop itself becomes their work device to do creating lessons and-
Okay, so this isn't related to bring your own. This is just for them to kind of function in the classroom.
This was their, the replacement cycle was up for the high school teachers.
So Tara, is that in reference to, because I have this circled, 105 teacher MacBook and 140 teacher iPad? Is that where your question comes from? On page 135?
On 129, there's description. There's also description in the front of the book. It doesn't quite all match. There's some crayons and pens that are in places that aren't in other places.
I guess, but my question was, you got 105 MacBooks, 140 iPads. Why, why are we buying both? But I think you just answered that question.
And the reason for the difference in the number is we have about 35 teachers that, at the high school, that have been in the Vanguard program, which was an intensive summer training program that they did, and they received a device as part of that training.
Okay, great.
And my only thing is, last point is, if you're going to go out for data, I would maybe do the inverse of what you guys were talking about. How many students would opt out for all four years? And then they're willing to say, I would take on the responsibility if there's, if I crack my screen of getting a new. So we would know as a district then, for four years, we only need to buy roughly X amount.
And again, I think the survey is no, make it clear, there's, there's no commitment. We're gathering data to continue to make a decision on this program.
So, yes, so, so just a couple of things that I remember, mind a wee bit. To some degree, the eighth graders won't have a frame of reference for it, but, but that's okay. We can provide that at the time. Whether it's the right decision or wrong decision, I didn't go out and do a particular survey because I didn't want to get ahead of this. In the sense of thinking that potentially we're going to one-on-one, what's happening? I'd rather, well, calculated to have the discussion at the budget time here, so that's, that's what we did. So we have to go out and get it now, that's fine.
Just real quick, I, I did think of one downside, or actually Chris whispered it, like, we don't want people also stockpiling an extra device, just to have an extra device. So that would be the downside of opt-in, that you, you're, you know, listen, you're bringing your own device, but you have the iPad at home so you can, whatever the kids do, play games on it. So that, that is a downside consideration, so.
A little bit, but that's what they, that's what we're hearing they do now, right? They get an iPad.
Right. And now it's not, as our administration said, as we've heard for three years, they weren't optimally using it and we're paying for it, you know, so. Yes, it would be, I get your point, but.
Mrs. Perrin.
I sent a quick operational question. So I bring my own MacBook to school. It breaks, Apple says it's going to take two weeks to fix. The school then provides me with a device to use in those two weeks?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, that's, if there's not another one at home, yes, if they come in, that we would get them something to use in the meantime, yes.
Sorry, I'm not trying to, it's just a big initiative. So can we talk about implementation? Because that seems to be part of what's driving this, that it, it, it wasn't implemented either the way it was conceived, you know, no blame or fault there. What were the implementation failures? Because I do think that, I mean, what we're hearing is it didn't quite work the way we wanted it to work, so we're going to try something new. What didn't work? What parts didn't work?
Well, the way, the way it has, has transpired for the most part is that the culture and climate of students' use, many students have different devices at home, a number of devices at home, some don't, okay? But it just came out, came to the, it played out where in 11th and 12th grade, students were bringing them in, teachers aren't getting into a fight, you can't bring it, right? And they, they accommodated that. I mean, that's, that's, that's not a, I'm not, I'm not saying that because it's a bad thing, it's, it's just reality.
Mrs. McCammon.
So just for the sake of clarity, you repeated it, but Duke, and I'm just going to ask again. So the three things we're looking for as a board coming back would be some more just specific analytical data about usage, however you decide to do that. Finding out if people, however, again, however you phrase it, people would be willing to purchase or would like to purchase their own devices. And then that third thing that, that Dave brought up would be the possibility of a consortium, a purchasing consortium. Is that what we're?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then could I just add for a future conversation to Mrs. McCammon's list? Since this is a philosophical change, I would have liked to see it in goals and objectives, even the, should we look at this? Could we look at this? Or I would have liked to have seen it in November. Yes, it did say one-to-one usage at the high school, but I would have liked some more, so that when I was looking at my budget book, I had more than a paragraph on it. So I'm really stuck on this as a major philosophical change. So I think we need to have that conversation outside of budget, whenever is appropriate, retreat whenever. But I think we need to understand what providing for student needs is, isn't, or if it's changed in a technological age.
Thank you, Mrs. Augman.
Quick data follow-up. Thank you. Jeff, again, I know we had discussions in the past about tracking usage as part of our data gathering, and we weren't able to do that with the previous devices. Now that we've gone to this web model, are we able to track sort of like who's coming in, what devices? Or is that, is there any way we're able to collect data automatically from that as opposed to a survey?
Hmm, not automatically on the device, but in the application or software itself.
Right, yeah, so if everybody's hitting the same app, we can tell what, where that's coming from, or it's just going to be IP, we wouldn't have device info.
It, it depends on the software.
Okay.
It depends if it's built in. So, yeah. And unfortunately, iPads are still very proprietary. We, we can't get any data off of them as to who's using them, who's not using them.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, good. From a board perspective, are we good on, okay, Mr. Maroney, sorry.
Just, just one last point, Jeff. I think when I was talking about the, the technician, I think I, I misspoke or didn't get my point across. My point is going back to data. I would like to get more data to understand why our Dergs have more assistance than we do. And if you can show me that we need more, and especially if we go one, then next year and you come and you say, here's the rationale of why we chose this one, and we've done this, then you, then you may get a second one. And to me, that's to Mrs. McCammon's point, this is the future. And I, I am in full support of this, but I think we need more data than just, you'll get it back faster. You can show me more, you may get more in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Maroney. All right, good. We will move on to Board of Finance. Any questions or comments? RC 15 Technology.
Yeah, so Jeff, quick question for me. The 3.6 million that's spent here, is there any town-related support in here?
Okay. Who's speaking? Rob?
Yeah. Yes, actually.
Well, Jeff, we're not, I don't want to, in the interest of everyone's time, we're going to just take the questions and then that's an easy one to answer. But any other questions, Rob?
Nope, that was it. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Rob.
I can't, wait, wait, can I add one?
Yeah, absolutely, Taylor.
I'm sorry, we're not coordinated on this. I just want to say, I agree. I mean, I, I just want to say from a fundamental perspective, I, you know, I wholly support the one-to-one initiative and I'm tempted to love the savings associated with this from a Board of Finance position. But I realize that that's just a shifting of the burden from the town to the individual families, and I don't like that. I think what I really don't like is waste. And I think that's what we've been seeing. And, you know, to several points that have been made, I think we just need to know why that waste is occurring. Like, did we just make the wrong choice on device? Were people not using iPads because they really wanted a PC? I mean, I think we need to have that data and, and I do agree, we should provide a basic option to families without having them feel like they need to apply for assistance.
Thank you, Taylor. We'll move on to RTMF and B. Jack?
Yeah, I, I, I just want to start off with a couple of things. First of all, I find that it's interesting that we're doing this switch at a time where there is a global chip shortage and all costs are pretty much high on devices. But let me go on something else. If what Jeff said is that things are all web-based for iPad, PC, iOS, I, I have difficulty and would like greater information on why we really do need both iPads and MacBooks for the staff. Because if it's web-based, it should be able to be applied to both, or we should be rethinking this. On the 85 middlesex desktops with the use of the cloud and other things, are all 85 of these really needed? Or are there other devices that can be used for that? I'm also trying to understand the difference between the 40 PCs, the cost of that versus the teacher versus the iPad on what we'd be buying on those. I, I do support what Dave said on making things available. Also, I would like to see a little bit greater definition on adding the tech person in here. Because if we're spending $40,000 so far, but we do go to bring your own, I would suspect that the $40,000 was significant, for half a year, will significantly decrease next year. And lastly, just a little side comment is, you know, when I hear, and this is reiterating what Dennis says, I, I definitely think in, from our perspective, in order to support adding the tech, Derg ratios are sometimes like hearing your kid says Sally's parent allows her to do this, why can't I? And so I think we need a little bit more details of how they're structured, what are they doing, how their organization is, because just a pure ratio to ratio is basically meaningless. So that's it.
Thank you, Jack. RTM Education, Ed?
It's actually going to be Teresa. Can you hear me?
Hey, Teresa, yeah, I know you guys.
Yeah, Ed, Ed, yeah, Ed had to step away.
Sorry, go ahead.
Last, okay, so most of our questions have been asked by the board members. So just to let you know, we are asking the same things in terms of opt-in. What else do we have? You know, can students have other, you know, devices? Have we spoken to Dr. McGeadigan about how she feels about this, given that just a year and a half ago, maybe? I can't even keep track of COVID time. She did a very big presentation in favor of why we have iPads at the school. So why the sudden shift? And then again, like, you know, selling off some of our district assets to parents, I'm assuming that means the devices, to give to parents who don't want to buy a new one. I'm going to do what some of the board members have done. I did have my hand raised as a, as an individual before Ed asked me to ask the questions. But again, so this is going to be me, not as an RTM member. I have a senior at the high school. He uses his iPad exclusively for his schoolwork. He does, so for every member, board member who says, well, my kid and their friends don't use the school-issued device, you will find people who will say, well, my child does use the school-issued device. And so I think this idea of a survey is a good one because I don't think you can assume that everybody is going to be willing to purchase a device that is brought into the school every single day. I, I know personally, I would not want my son's MacBook Pro in that school every day. So that's just us. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Teresa. Appreciate that. We'll move over to CDSP.
A lot of our questions have been asked as well. We were talking about the opt-in, opt-out program. There is a Darian public schools tech plan. Will you be revising it with the bring your own device? We are starting an equity audit. Will this be incorporated in it? Who brings their own versus school? How will the kids, when they have to take the state test, if they've never been on an iPad, will that be an easy transition for those students? And how often do we, will we have to replace the iPads on the carts? And then are there recycling credits to be gained for other equipment being replaced? And the last two questions are, what is the difference on page 136? What is the difference between a teacher MacBook versus a student MacBook? Because the price is $202 or $203. And then 125 teacher Chromebooks in fiscal year '25 and 125 teacher laptops or laptops in fiscal, fiscal year '26. And we just want to understand that.
Thank you, Lori. CPAC?
Hi, I just have one question, and I apologize if it's been discussed already. I'm wondering about the implications of, with assisted technology and bring your own device and with any outstanding hardware and software contracts we have, also with teacher training around using assisted technology across multiple devices. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Jamie. Michelle, we'll go over to public comment.
There are no raised hands at this time.
All right, good. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for that discussion, and we know what the follow-up is. So we'll move over to the Early Learning Program, RC 26.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the ELP Budget. So just as a reminder, the ELP program is an integrated preschool program for children with learning differences and children with typically developing skills who learn together in a nurturing environment. As a program, we design to meet the needs of all learners. Children in our diverse classrooms develop empathy towards others and appreciation for differences. Families are critical partners and are supportive of children's growth and development. ELP provides a comprehensive 16-hour program, a 20-hour program, a 22 and a half hour program as per IEP for young threes and fours, where housed currently Royal, Oxbridge and Tokineke Elementary Schools. So I want to just kind of review some of the budget. The Teacher Aid Account 021603, at the start of the school year, we were not completely, our positions were not completely filled. And since then, the budget was revised for this number, and now the positions are filled. So the increase for next year reflects a full staff of paraprofessionals. When looking at Accounts 022003, Textbooks and Consumables, and Account 024011, General Teaching Supplies, there was a budget transfer from last school, school year, and it was revised. So we found that the teachers were using more of the general teaching supplies than textbooks and consumables. And so those new numbers reflect, reflect, excuse me, their needs. For professional development, Account 25003, I'm requesting the same amount as last year, the $10,000. We'd like to continue, continue our work with Dr. Margie Gillis from Literacy Howe. Our work with her began in 2019 when we received the grant from the Office of Early Childhood. And since then, we've been learning and working on identifying risk factors for dyslexia and reading interventions and implementation of strategies and interview, through interventions through the coaching model. So someone from Literacy Howe, who has been working in preschools in other communities, as well as Darian, has been working with our teachers and really providing professional development and on the, on, on the go training, we'll say. So we'd like to continue this for next school year. Also, the funds continue to support the Early Learning and Development Standards work and the Connecticut Documentation for Observation and Teaching Schedule, the CTDOT. So the CTDOTs are like our report card. So it's just looking at student work and really assessing that work. The tuition proposed here is a 3% increase from $7,020 to $7,230. That's, the increase is in line with the current preschools in Darian are working with. This school year, I'd like to have the board considered building sub to support the ELP program. ELP has difficulty securing subs for the program, given the young ages and the needs of the students. A dedicated ELP substitute would provide, would be available for across three elementary schools, so one person across the three schools, on days when the building sub is not needed. on days when the building sub is not needed, of course, that sub would go into a position that is open in the district. Um, the provision of the dedicated ELP substitute would ensure support for ELP stu- students during the certified staff and paraprofessional absences. The re- the request is partially offset by the reduction of the daily substitute account from ten thousand to three thousand. And that's in a nutshell.
Thank you, Laura, thanks for all that you do, um, on a daily basis. I know you're excited to get into that new Ox Ridge School, so.
Very excited.
That'll really continue to enhance the overall program where you're all together in one building. So exciting things to look forward to, thank you very much. Um, I will open it up to board questions and comments. Mrs. Parent?
Hi Laura, thank you. Um, can you provide the data that I know you've done in years past of the, the tuition for the other preschools? I just want to have it in front of me so I can know where we are in line. It still seems like what this is quite a nice value and I'm just curious where we land.
Sure, I'll send it to Rich Roodel or he may already have it.
Um, my other question, which I'm, you may not know the answer, do you happen to know the numbers in birth to three? Have they increased because of COVID? Do you know, I'm just thinking, you know, projecting out, do you have any ideas?
Um, increase of numbers, that's a question. Um, I, I think more what we're seeing is the increase of needs. Um, I think our numbers are pretty, uh, similar, there may be some increases. Um, I know there is more community referrals, um, from the community um, for assistance because of the COVID, um, you know, quarantine. So, you know, we're really looking at what should we be expecting? So yes, overall, there's increases in referrals. Um, so more information to come on that. Um, but also the intensity of the students has been increasing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I don't have an exact number for you, I could find it, but I don't have.
Thanks Laura, Mrs. McKenna.
I think it's a couple of days early Laura, but I would love to hear from you before we close out the budget process about where you are on applications. Right, I know with COVID, we've looked at, you know, much lower numbers than usual and have hopes that we will return to a more traditional model.
So I will say, um, that this school year, we, um, probably will end, um, around, um, ninety-nine students, maybe plus or minus a few. So this school year, um, even within the COVID, um, timeframe, we are back to our usual numbers. Um, it is a little early, we're collecting those applications. Um, I notified, um, the parents that it apply, um, who entered, we do have some open spots. So I'm going to send out another blast to families and to, uh, posts um, to say that we do, we are looking for more students, threes and fours for next school year. So, um, but we, our numbers are looking similar as this school year, not the year before.
Go ahead, Mrs. McKenna.
Can you give us a little more color on, um, why a building substitute might be necessary, why it's hard to staff? You know, as, as.
Sure, so you know. Yep, um, so one of the biggest, or one of the larger concerns is working with three and four-year-olds. And people who sign up to substitute or, um, building subs, you know, they're elementary, our students tend to be more, uh, or sorry, less independent um, in play and helping them get ready for the day, perhaps, you know, personal hygiene needs to help, toileting is always a factor, not everyone who substitutes wants to do that. Um, and you know, we're adding more staff to those three elementary schools than they typically have. Um, so, you know, I, I just think the sure numbers of it and consistency um, in training of, um, uh, sorry, a substitute would be less, um, you know, less detrimental, uh, to students um, than having a substitute not know how to work with three and four-year-olds as someone who comes in and thinks that they're going to work with an elementary student.
So can you, I, I think that makes sense, can you just develop that, that consistency point? Why that's important to this population, why that, what, you know, substitute.
Sure, so, um, we have diverse learners, we have learners with, um, specific needs. And if we have a staff member who is substituting, um, that is knowledgeable and trained, um, basically on the job, I would say, or if there's any kind of, um, after-school, you know, or students leave at one-thirty, um, additional training, those, um, people who do come in and sub regularly would be trained, so they'd have a higher or a better understanding of how to work with students with diverse needs. Um, and those needs of threes and fours, you know. Um, we find a lot of, um, substitute students are lovely and want to do a lot for children and sometimes that's not what that child needs. So it's really, um, helping, uh, the staff member understand what to do, when to step in, when to step out, um, and how to support a child on a specific device, if that's something that they're using or a PEC system, which is a communication system. Um, there'll be less, um, downtime for that student and the staff to help.
Yes, thank you.
Good, Mrs. Worm?
Yes, hi Laura. Um, who are you? Quick question, and I should probably know this, but I don't. And it's not really necessarily to the budget, but you did talk about, um, possibly the need coming up for, you know, more space and referrals. Does the new building have a larger capacity than being spread out across the three that you're at now?
So currently we have eight classrooms, um, and one small little classroom, um, for a, a, a very small population. Um, so the new, new site will have nine classrooms and, uh, various rooms. Also, we'll have a nice big common room, which will help with, uh, you know, if it's bad weather, recess time, family gatherings, if we're ever allowed to do that, you know, we could space it out, there'll be more room for a lot of, for, for the students and, um, the classrooms are at large size. I, I think the caps for the classroom are fifteen. Um, so we would be able to provide, uh, nine classrooms of fifteen if need be. So yeah.
Or the capacity that was built in during the planning of this was a hundred and fifty.
Yes, thank you for that math.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman.
Um, so I'm excited to see the budget book lets us know that we have ninety-one students this year, which is great because that means we're up from where we originally reported this fall. Um, but I, I do have questions about the building sub. Um, we do have a building sub in each building and we do pay a higher rate than a daily sub. So I guess my question would be, can we not train those building subs so that they really can function across the whole, um, spectrum of grades within the building, rather than an additional ten thousand dollars for a building sub? I hear what you're saying Laura, um, that a fifth grader and a three-year-old are very different. Um, but certainly we have kids with needs across the spectrum in a building and we would hope that, um, subs would need them, but I don't think in terms of substitutes, there's any other qualifications for three and four, but could we not provide more training for our current building subs so they can best serve ELP without dedicating a whole nother building sub?
Sure, we can certainly train people across the, you know, across that class, uh, that school site. I, I think it has to do with numbers of, um, people out in a building. Um, and having ELP, we do have a lot more staffed and, um, you know, it, it's a mini-school within a school. So I think, um, the preschool adds a lot more staff needs and coverage needs than a typical, um, school without ELP. And I, you know, it's a need, I can share that. Um, there are times where we've had to be very creative of how we staff classrooms, um, because those needs are unable to be met, either by building subs or substitutes within the community.
So, go ahead, Mrs. Akman.
Just one clarification, what is the student to teacher ratio in ELP needed?
It, um, so there's one certified teacher in every classroom. And then based on classroom makeups of students, there's either one to three paraprofessionals in the classrooms right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman.
We, the fifteen, we're, we meet the state standards, but, um, you know, it's based on student need.
Sure, I'll pause there for a moment, I think Mrs. Klein's got her hand raised before you, Mr. Ramoni, if that's all right.
That's fine.
Go ahead, Mrs. Klein.
Thank you, I was, and just to, um, Laura, if I may, just to support what Laura's saying to Miss Akman's question. Mrs. Akman, very often what happens is those building subs are not available. Um, that, because there's so many people out at one time that Laura's program for often doesn't have access to those, to the building sub. Uh, because they're first taking care of other classrooms that need to be covered in the, in the building. So that's been kind of the competition of how to access that building sub when there is a teacher outage that really has to be addressed within, within the building. So that's been a, a piece that we've tried to, you know, negotiate and it's been quite challenging.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Ramoni.
Yeah, building on this, the, the building substitutes, it, because it, it will put an unfair onus on Ox Ridge to try to pull from one building sub for the entire ELP. I guess my question is the opposite, can the ELP building sub work as an Ox Ridge sub as well?
Yeah, I would, if there is no coverage needs in ELP, um, they would help where they're needed.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Worm. Good. All right, we will go to, um, the Board of Finance. Um, any questions about RC twenty-six, the early learning program?
None.
Thanks, Rob. Michelle, are you still with us?
Yeah, I would just ask if, if that's, I mean, I don't, I, maybe I don't understand exactly what a building sub is like, but if they're pretty much on call to back up, you know, nine classrooms at Ox Ridge at some point, is that a ten thousand dollar number, a real number?
Thank you. RTM F and B, Jack?
Uh, Laura, always a, uh, pleasure, no questions.
Thanks, Jack, happy new year.
You too.
RTM Education, Ed?
No questions.
Thanks, Ed, CDSP, they are good, CPAC?
Uh, two questions, just the, um, amount of, um, the ELP budget that's in RC twenty-four, you know that number, and then also the amount of the ten K for professional development that is for the literacy how we're, or I'm sorry, literacy how, which we, um, we support, but it seems like a small number, uh, for that work and also for all the other professional development that takes place. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle will open up to the public, any questions on RC twenty-six, the early learning program?
There are no raised hands at this time.
Great, Laura, thank you, thank you very much for spending time with us.
No problem, thank you, everyone.
We will go on to, um, RC twenty-four, special education. I'm sure I'm turning that over to Mrs. Klein, correct?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Danine, and, and I know that we recently, good afternoon, we recently did our update to the Board of Education on December fourteenth. So it with, um, if everyone's in agreement, I will move on to the various personnel budget line items. Um, and just to reference the, uh, December fourteenth, uh, report to the board, just on understanding that the framework is really based on PPT recommendations. So when we come to you asking for addition personnel budget line items, we've been thoughtful and mindful and diligent in our being able to aggregate um, supports for all students. And we come now, right now, I, we had mentioned that we had sixty-nine additional students in the district from two thousand twenty, twenty-one to two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. And we showed that in that bar graph and we also mentioned that there were twenty-four of those students who were students who were, um, students with IPs, um, at DHS. So I'd like to just use that as kind of a framework as we look at some of the personnel budget line items we're asking for. There are four changes which affect RC twenty-four and in the IDA and the ORP grants. The first one is the, um, full-time special, um, speech and language pathologist. Uh, we noted in our document for narrative that in two thousand nineteen, twenty, we had fifty-nine students that were mandated for speech and language services in high school. In two thousand twenty-one, it became sixty-four students. And during the current school year, there are seventy-nine students. And we're just in January right now. We also know that based on students who are articulating, we'll know there'll be, um, at least eighty-three students recommended for speech and language therapy for twenty-two, twenty-three, and that doesn't include several of our students who are moving up to the high school from middlesex. So looking at that currently, we have two speech and language pathologists at the high school. And the increased number of students in the caseload would mean an average of forty-one point five students per speech and language pathologist. And just to give you an idea, um, some of our totals, usually we have three speech and language pathologists in middlesex and they may average closer to, um, students within twenty-four, twenty-five or twenty-eight students. So we recognize that, um, we are having great deal difficulty covering this and that we really would need that one point oh, um, speech and language pathology, pathologist for next year. Um, again, moving on to our need of increased students with IPs and increased services, and there are recommendations for additional services, part of it, yes, is recovery. We anticipate that will continue, but we also recognize with those additional twenty-four students that we're looking at, um, maintaining the one point oh FTE, special education teacher we had in our grant this year. And when we look at the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we recognize that we've been able to cover our current case load. We have approximately another twenty students who are in the referral process at this time, anticipating some of the decisions or, or what services may be indicated. We recognize between the referrals we have currently and between the recommended, recommended services currently for our students that it's essential to have an additional one point oh special education teacher. We also recognize that we have several of our ALC students moving up to the high school next year. And with those students, we know the coverage that will need to support their programs as well. So looking at our numbers, just maintaining the current staffing we have, understanding that one of them is in our grant, we're requesting the board to approve a one point oh FTE for DHS for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And school psychologists, again, this year we've had, um, the opportunity to have a school psychologist in our grant. That brought us to have four school psychologists in DHS this year. And I just want to share with you some of the, uh, greater opportunities we had, um, this year. So this year, with the additional school psychologist, we had greater opportunity for students to meet with school psychologists throughout the school day. We had greater opportunities for families to have support with the school psychologists about both home and school issues for many of our students. We had greater opportunity to collaborate with the general education and special education teachers on grade level meetings. We also had greater opportunity for crisis intervention and a greater opportunity for students to drop in to see a psychologist, um, sometimes unannounced actually, throughout the school day. And we also learned at the same time that outside resources for counseling have really long waiting lists, and this happened over the last couple of years, of course. And then there is a nexus between COVID and waiting lists at outside, um, and private providers and agencies. And many of our families have really turned to our school psychologists for support for their students. So we understand that these opportunities were really realized because we were able to disaggregate, um, the responsibility for PPT meetings, for five oh four meetings, for evaluations, for observations, um, because they were now shared among four psychologists, um, as in, as opposed to three psychologists. The other thing we really learned, which is consistent in our other buildings, um, in our other buildings, the school psychologists are attached to a grade level. So at middlesex, there were three psychologists, there were three grades, and they're really able to work closely with those general and special education teachers to really support our students and transition with them as one of the, um, actually spokesperson for them as they articulate to the next grades. Very often in high school, you won't have the same case manager from grade to grade and that school psychologist becomes, um, a voice and, and an advocate for that student to really turnkey what that student's needs are with new teachers um, and really to monitor that throughout the, the school year. We also have that same opportunity in elementary school. Um, because of, you know, great support and having two psychologists there, we really have an opportunity to have grade level support and really work within classrooms, work with teachers, work with teams to support our students. So we can't emphasize enough how having a dedicated psychologist per grade really shapes and supports students as they articulate, uh, among the grades within DHS. I, I just want to be reminded also that we know, and, and please know, as I know you do, the need for social emotional learning is, is greater than ever. And we don't anticipate it's going to be lessening. Um, we probably anticipate that it's going to be increasing. Um, and I know when Dr. McCarthy and Dr. Mullin and, and this Manuelson spoke at a meeting earlier on in the year on staffing and human resources at the October twenty-six meeting, they really emphasized what the special education, um, social emotional learning and general education learning has really, um, been supported by that additional psychology. um, been supported by that additional psychologist at the high school. So we, we really, um, hope that they'll support the addition of the school psychologists at the high school. Uh, going on to the other, um, areas that we've asked for, in addition to that, um, school psychologists, those are really our personnel budget line items with the addition of the school driver. Uh, the school driver, and it's in the numbers there. I just wanted to emphasize also that having that additional suburban is different than just having an extra bus. That suburban driver really helps support students throughout the day. Very often, there may be a child with medical needs, there's reason to be some, um, have some additional transportation needs for some of our programs, both at middle sex and at the high school. So we really recognize that not only does it offset some other expenses, it really supports our students throughout the school day, not merely for arrival and dismissal, um, to and from school. For contracted speech on items on account line 21305. And it, it, though it's a very small, just so you know, it's a very small item increase, we're looking at $13,811. But we did want to be clear, the reason we're asking for that is we've been able to, um, use some of the dollars in our next year's budget that were utilized for different reasons. So this year, we had three speech and language pathologists, um, who were out on leave, and we needed to replace them with contracted services. We don't anticipate having that need next year, but we do anticipate that we'll be able to use those dollars to support our services that are recommended for 22, 23, which include recovery services, which include new entrance students and anticipated student supports. The account number 21308 for extended school year, that really difference is really because it reflects the number of four extended school days um, in the month of June, um, and payment toward that. For contracted PT, that has been on, understanding that's happened over the last year, there's been an increased recommendation PT services. I think it supports what Laura was saying earlier, we're seeing different levels of intensive needs for many of our, um, younger learners. Um, and we have added PT services, um, essentially in elementary school and some at, at middle school as well. For our various operating budget line items, looking at consultant services, again, we've described that the funds really go to assistive technology, to be analysts of BCBA's, to looking at transition services. We've have informed the born and we're aware that now our services go through age 22. So we really look at building on those services for our students who are utilizing it in transition programs. And also looking at, um, what we're looking for utilization for data management. The pupil evaluation, the increase in line 25011 is really about, um, increase in, in evaluation costs. There's an increase from all of our costs, um, at this time, and also we didn't identify psychiatric evaluations, which are included in this line. We've also had an increase in requests for psychiatric evaluations. For account 52002 in our transport, um, it looks again, if you look at the ESY school days also, we're looking at those four days in June that will have to have increased cost for transportation. The out of district transportation, this increase also reflects contractual increases again from our vendors, from ECS um, and Relia, and, um, as identified, it's about a 4% increase, and there's also been changes in student placements. Also understand that during COVID and out of district placements, we were able to do ride shares. Previously during COVID, we haven't had that same opportunity for ride shares. Um, so that may also be reflected in that line item. For tuition for public schools, that light I'm increase is about additional students who will be participating in the tuition in public schools. And in our account 143001, our tuition for non-public schools, you'll see a reduction. And that reduction also is due to students who have returned to, um, to our district programs. And lastly, in excess cost, based on the formula for excess cost, you can see that we're projecting a threshold of 109,966 per student before reimbursement. Um, and the new entitlement cap is 75%. And there's a document later on in our section that shows the excess cost over the years. So if you want to look at page 174, that really delineates, um, the different, um, percentages over the last several years. So in conclusion, again, knowing that we've been mindful and thoughtful, our request for staffing is really based on student need, based on IP recommendations and PPT recommendations, and then supporting our students, um, in all our grades, in grades pre K through 12, particularly in the high school where we've seen the greatest number of students and increase in services that are indicated this time. And I can't stress enough the notion of how important social emotional learning is and how greatly we've benefited from having additional psychologists at the high school this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. Thank you for, um, I know it's been, uh, a challenge over the last two years, so thank you again to you and your entire team, Scott, and everyone for continuing to look at for the health and wellbeing and services needed by our students. So much appreciated. Um, at this point, I'll open it up for board questions. Uh, Mrs. Akman?
Um, I have a few, but we could start with the driver. I'm trying to understand our savings. Um, I have a few questions, and then Rich, maybe you can help me out. So I see a reduction in out of district transportation of 84,000. So is that saying that our out of district transportation was looking to be up around $200,000 this year without this initiative?
Correct.
Okay, so maybe some color on that at some point. And then the FTE transportation driver, I'm assuming that salary not, not inclusive of benefits?
It is just salary.
Okay, so we, I guess we'd have to kind of know a full workup to realize the savings there. Um, and then this is where I think, remember I was saying I couldn't box out from the front of the book to the back of the book, the RC's personnel? I think it's the drivers I can't find in the back of the book, so maybe we, it doesn't have to be for today, but you know, I get like 785, 783, so we can just, so we can box that out, that'd be great, but I think it's the drivers that I can't find in the back under the object, um, personnel detail. Um, or at least I don't know where they are, but you can even give me an answer next Tuesday, or you could tell me my addition's wrong. Um, which is possible. Um, but can you explain the savings? Like, how do we save $84,000? And then salary and benefits?
Sure. Um, so it's a combination of two things. And district wise, uh, we're looking, if we get the fourth suburban, we can actually transport a number of ELP students uh, that we're currently transporting with, uh, for student smaller vans. Um, in addition to the having, uh, another suburban, it'll allow us to take on routes that might go to CES or Hubbard Day or Pinnacle, things like that, where we're contracting out with Relia or ECS. So we have the ability to flex our schedule with our in-house suburbans. Um, and then on those periods where they, they don't drive, Mr. Lynch mentioned this earlier, we actually have them do custodial work. So we send them over to high school, we send them over to the middle school, so that while they're here for seven and a half hour days, they're either driving or they're cleaning, one of the two.
Okay, and any idea what, um, salary plus benefits comes to?
So the benefits would probably be about another 20,000 if the driver, uh, elects benefits. Uh, typically what we've seen is our drivers aren't electing benefits, um, they either get it from a spouse or somewhere else.
Okay. I have some more, but someone else can go.
Okay, um, look to the screen, nobody there? Anyone else? Board questions or comments? Mr. Maroney?
Yeah, to, to kind of work off of something Mrs. Akman was talking about earlier with the nurses, what I struggle with is a psychologist, and we have psychologists at in, in elementary school, we don't have them at the high school or middle school RCs, and then we have them in special ed, so I'm trying to understand where they all are, and I don't understand how we have all the nurses and one RC and a psychologist spread throughout seven or eight RCs, and why don't we have the same logic applied to both?
So I'm, I'm, hi, Mr. Maroney, I don't, I can't answer that question in terms of the, the disaggregation of where it is. I can tell you that all of our psychologists address the needs of both students in general education and special education. Uh, we understand that their time is disaggregated in a way that evaluations are conducted with kids who are referred, who are general education kids at the time they're referred. But they do, um, support all our students and all learners in our, um, in our pre K through 12. I can't really speak to how many are in the, um, and, and perhaps Rich can speak to that also, when we added the second psychologist um, last, um, two years ago, it was, um, on different line items, so Rich could really explain that better than I. But it is because they support all of our students.
Anything you want to add?
So the psychologist, uh, they're split point 5.5, so there's essentially a half of two people in each of the elementary schools, and then the other half is sitting in RC 24.
And in the middle school and high, the middle school and high school?
Middle school and high school are all in RC 24.
Okay.
Is there a reason you do that, Rich?
Um, that's been the historical practice here. Um, you could certainly change it, so it's consistent to point 5.5 um, across all the schools. Uh, the state actually does 8515 as their allocation, so whether they're um, in RC 24 or the schools, the state has this call on state reports, 8515 for things like psychology.
Could I just stop? Sorry, I jumped.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Senior.
Is there, is there, do you have a preference? Is there something that you'd like to adjust or no?
Either way for this is fine.
Okay. So there's nothing you're recommending at this point in time?
No, I mean, if people would rather see them in the schools, we could do that, or if they would rather have an RC 24.
Okay, it's your issue.
One, one person would like to see it in the school. I don't know how the other eight feel, but I find it difficult to try to track them and, and we're you, you, you can't compare apples to apples, and, and some schools are gunned to Spain, some aren't, so I find it difficult.
Well, so I would agree that having it different ways is difficult. Don't laugh at me, but we said we were going to try to conform the chart of accounts, so if we're going to try to do it state reporting wise, maybe we should do it state reporting wise so that we know. But again, I guess the question would be, if what we're starting to do is generalize the budget with special education spread throughout the budget, we have to understand what we're tracking and what we're not. And, and that's going to become more difficult if we apply nurses one way, psychologists another way, and services a different way. It'd be nice to kind of come to a consensus, so we just understand what we're looking at.
Wait, thank you, Mrs. Akman. Mr. Brown?
Hey, Duke, thank you. Um, I'm just leaving the chart on 174, Rich. At the 102772 number, which is a four and a half time cost, which gets me back to that 23838 number, which I guess to me seems like a fully allocated cost per student. We use that number here, would we use for calculating our state, um, reimbursement rate? Would we use fixed costs and then look at incremental, or do we always use a fully allocated cost for, for this, this model?
I'm not quite sure I understood, if you could maybe repeat?
Sure, so we have 102, uh, 772, which is four and a half times cost to educate. I do the division, I get 23838. And so that takes you back to the number we were discussing earlier today, which I would interpret, I mean, is the wrong phraseology here, is a fully cost allocated number for education per student. And, and so I know we had a discussion earlier, type of maybe using an incremental cost, uh, measure, but I see we don't use that here, so I guess for consistency sake, when we think about what our cost is, we're, we're really talking about the fully allocated cost per student. I mean, we don't use any, I, I mean, if we use an incremental cost number here, our reimbursement would be pretty low, so I just don't see. So for, uh, practices, you know, which number makes the most sense?
In truth, the whole PPE doesn't actually make a lot of sense how the state calculates it. Um, so there are expenses within our PPE, um, that are actually not in the board's budget. Uh, so for example, there are in-kind services that the town, uh, allocates to us that we have to include. And then there are examples where expenses you have, like home to school transportation is not a part of the PPE. So it's not, um, actually all of the expenses within the budget that make up our per pupil. Uh, the reason we use, uh, the full PPE here is that's how the state does determine what they will reimburse. Uh, so the state's formula is the published PPE multiplied by four and a half. So that's Darian's share on that student, and then anything over and above that, you get reen- reimbursed whatever that times the entitlement is.
Okay, so I guess what I was calling the fully allocated cost would be the PPE here. Um, so thank you for that correction, and I guess my point is the PP is really what it costs to allocate a student, it's not that we, we have an empty desk, we paid for the heat, so it's just the incremental cost because the fixer cover, it's really the PPE number we should use.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mrs. Akman?
So staying on excess cost for a second, um, I know we experienced a higher rate of return than we, we thought in 2021. Um, but that was, were pretty extenuating circumstances because we were open. Are we? 75% is pretty aggressive for us to go with? Does anyone have any thoughts on that? I mean, I'm just saying, schools are open, services are being applied for anything that we do through the grant, just so everyone's on the same page, we can't then apply for, for excess cost. So 75 seems like we're going for it.
Yes, so this, the current year, we're expecting it to be less as more districts submit costs, uh, based on closures from the prior years. We're expecting closure will return to normal, um, and that's usually been between 72 and 75%. So we're really on that higher end of that, um, of that range.
Could, could I follow up?
Yes, so just, sorry.
Just to be clear, historically, 72 to 75, let's not count any of the COVID years.
If you take out last year, it was abnormally high.
What was it last year again?
It was a little over 80%.
Okay.
Um, and that, in part was you had a lot of districts who were closed, they didn't spend those expenses, and then as a result, the pool was smaller. Um, so for this year, we're expecting it to be lower because we're expecting that pool of submissions to be much higher, and then the pot at the state stays flat, so then
What's this year that you have? Sorry. Okay, and then?
So then we're assuming a little bit more of a normal.
To be clear, we haven't hit 75% since 2016, 2017. And some of our recovery services are going to be covered by grants this year, so we're going to have less. In theory, we could have fewer, I mean, sorry, next year, because we still have ARPA funds, we could have less that we're even eligible to apply for.
So anything that we're applying to in a grant, uh, we're ensuring is non-excess cost eligible.
Yeah.
Um, so we are separating out those data points so that we're not charging anything to a grant that we could claim. So anything that's in the grant for recovery services, um, shouldn't impact our excess cost reimbursement or potential reimbursement.
Okay. 75% is still bullish, I think. It's up for discussion among the nine of us, but.
Are you on 174?
I'm on 174, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to do an average of it and figure out what all those.
You know, we, so my only thing is, we're usually fairly conservative on it because money returned, either can be returned to the town, but if we are over on it, we could end up significantly lower, right? Because it's a counter expense to the budget, so it brings the budget down. But it might not actually be realized. So my only thing is, think of it as a counter expense, bringing your budget down, and if we don't realize it, we know we have to make up the difference. If the services are actually as we expect them to be.
Thank you, Mrs. Stone. Mrs. McCammon?
Um, related to that point, and I, I think the right way to build the budget is the way it's done, which is what we know, um, and forecasting based on what we know, um, and I think this is what we do every month with the, with the, uh, finance committee meeting. But just an acknowledgement here at the table that we could see these, these numbers shift around and that we need to be in open conversation with our fellow town bodies, because we can't sit here and plan for what we don't know. Uh, but there could be things that come up, there could be needs that we, uh, couldn't anticipate today, and that could include, you know, the, the wrong excess cost reimbursement rate. So I, I think special ed in particular, we have all, we've done a great job of forecasting historically, I hope we will continue to do so. But there do continue to be unknowns, so I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCammon. Mrs. Akman?
I, Dennis came out.
I didn't see Dennis, sorry. Mr. Maroney?
So going.
She's yielded the floor to you.
Thank you. Going to the, to the speech and language, uh, therapy. You have it in here as a ratio of teachers, but it's more of, on the needs of those students, right? It's hours per, per person, so in looking at this, you know, we, we went up five students in one year, and, and last year it went up 23%, 15 students, and this year we're already up four students, and we're only halfway through the year. Are you comfortable enough that we have enough with one additional person? Because that's still, I mean, it, it goes into more of hours than, than ratio, you brought it back to the ratio that it was in 1920. But are you comfortable with the hours, especially during this time of COVID, when students are not in school, not getting me one-to-one instruction, um, going forward?
We are because, um, and thank you for the question, we are because we've looked at our articulating eighth graders, Mr. Maroney. So we know which students are moving up, and in looking at and working with the speech pathologists in the high school, we're confident with the addition that we can address the needs of all our high school students for 22, 23, with additional position. Thank you.
Mrs. Klein, just at the, the FTE, Special Education Teacher at the high school, you talk about the um, IP requirements for an additional 24 students, you have 20 students in the referral process. At a high level, how many students are exiting, um, out of the program in, um, this coming year? Do we know?
I, I'd have to look at the number, um, Mrs. Danine, of exactly how many are exiting out of our seniors. I could get that to, um, Dr. Adley to share easily. I do want to just emphasize though, that this year, even with the additional teacher that we have, some of our teachers have had caseloads as, as high as, um, 20, 24 kids. some of our teachers have had caseloads as as high as, um, twenty, twenty-four kids.
Okay.
So, you know, so we we recognize, again, I probably can answer that better when I look at how many kids are aging out next year.
That's all right.
But but there have been high caseloads for our case managers and our special education teachers in the high school this year.
No, great. I just think it's a nice number to know, to just put it in perspective, but we want to have the right numbers in place. Thank you, Mrs. Klein. Um, Mrs. Akman?
Um, so I guess this is for the administration and the board. You know, for years we worked at pulling staff out of grants, right? Because basically you have them in the grant, and then when you bring them into your budget, you spike your budget. So if we brought them in our budget, we kind of knew where we were. Um, and so I think just something to keep in mind, I understand, again, we're looking in a high budget year, we're looking to offset costs, but the school psychologist seems here to stay. Um, we've got an SLP in the grant, and depending on how many kids are aging out, that's here to stay. Um, we're adding a special education teacher based on need, so I, just so we know, we are using the grant right now as a level off, but if these come in, you know, we have ten point seven FTE this year, we'll have more next year. I just, I always worry about putting staff in grants for that very reason of when you bring it in, all of a sudden you spike your budget again. So.
Your observation is correct, and that.
No, because I worked to get them out.
It is, it is being used as as a bridge and, uh, it's a one-time, in this, in this case, this is this one time for ARP. So you are correct in that observation, but I think we've always said that we would flag anything that potentially would would stay or otherwise, but you make the correct observation, I guess.
Thank you, Mrs. Akman. Uh, Mrs. Parent?
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. I just want to make sure, so it seems like we're adding a lot at the high school. Are we, are you hundred percent confident that the middle school and the elementary schools have the staffing they need, even with these additional, uh, referrals and possibly, you know, the year, next year and the year after, even with more so?
We're confident, um, I don't know if we can ever say a hundred percent confident because we don't know about students who are moving in or recommended services, but we are confident. We've looked at, um, grade by grade, level by level in in pre-K through eight, that we are confident in staff properly now.
Thank you.
Mrs. McCammon? I thought you had your hand up before.
Oh, thank you.
I was trying to call without even looking at you, because I thought I saw your hand up before. Mr. Brown?
Hey, thanks, Duke. Um, just a follow-up question to Tara Akman and I'm asking this for information and maybe it doesn't belong in budget, and I promise you, I'm not trying to be confrontational, I'm just trying to understand history. Since you have the long institutional history. If I was doing, say, financial statement analysis, I would like to keep things year over year consistent, and I know we obviously have finance doing analysis of our budget as we do. But if I can get a grant and I can get something free, wouldn't I rather do that than in in put up with a little bit of lumpiness in the budget? And I'm just trying to understand what that historical preference has been in the trade-offs, and maybe that's something we bring up later. But I'm just curious as to what the thinking was in the past on that.
If if you're asking me, yeah, all I'm doing is pointing out, I think sometimes, like we've heard earlier today, which is often referenced, oh, when you bring FTEs, you're looking at this expenditure over the years. We as a board just need to recognize we are bringing in FTEs. We are getting it right now at, uh, a non-taxpayer cost, which I'm all for. But we need to realize what we're committing to, and then next year, all of a sudden, when we see a psychologist and start the debate, we've committed to it two years now, we've just gotten it for free. So I'm just kind of saying as long-term planning, you are, there is a higher FTE possible increase that we are actually accepting right now. Um, and in the past, if you're asking from my historical knowledge, what we tried to do in lower budget years was bring staff out of grants so that the increases were, you know, incremental each year, and we weren't seeing high spikes. So I see nothing wrong with the way we're doing it this year. I'm just saying, keep an eye on it because we are actually committing to more FTEs.
All right, so, so I guess we're in agreement, free's good, we like free.
Yep, you like free, Dave. Although I don't know if there's any such thing as free.
But I, but I, but I think, Dave, it's to Tara's point, it's been just a philosophy on the board, and also we haven't had necessarily the dollar amounts of grants.
Right.
Had over the last two years, which some of them have been tied to what we need to do for student needs and remediation.
Of course.
And so I think that's how the administration is trying to plan.
Yeah, no, and don't get me wrong, I think with the past couple of years, we've had remediation, and the more of it we can get is very important. And, um, into the comments made earlier, we really need to look at the status quo and see what's working right now. I think remediation is key. Um, but I think if we have those resources and we can get them, obviously we should footnote it and be conscious what's coming down the road, but, um, the more we can deliver, uh, to benefit our students and taxpayers, I'm all for.
So just to put a finer point on it, we're actually not talking about remediation because these are not remediative services. These are actual services. Because what we've heard is they're not for remediation. So again, I'm just flagging it so that, you know, our other partners online, when they say, what do you mean? You've had ten last year and you've got, you know, three more FTE next year, and maybe that won't be, but we are. I'm just making a public acknowledgement that we are kind of including these FTEs at the moment we found a different way to pay for them, but they're not going anywhere anytime soon.
Any other board questions? All right.
Oh, wait, no, I do.
Sure, go ahead, Mrs. Akman.
Um, uh, Mrs. Klein, can you talk a little bit about out-of-district tuition? It looks like we're, we're, we're back around nineteen twenty, um, actuals, you know, we're, we're higher than that. Is that just a return to opening of of other institutions that were closed? Or are we, again, seeing an uptick in student need outside of the district?
No, I think it's really just about recommendations and and student need outside of the district.
Okay.
Um, to your question, Mrs. Akman, um, I also think that, um, there are some not only student need and recommendations outside of the district, but there have been many students who have returned to district also, so both things are true.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good, so we'll move to Board of Finance and any questions on RC twenty-four special ed?
None for me, Duke.
Thank you, Rob. Taylor, you still with us?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, you know, I am sensitive, you know, as Jill suggested, there's a fellow board in town, especially in the finance seat, about the rate that's being assumed for ECR reimbursement. It's obviously a big question mark every year. I know we've budgeted sixty-seven and a half percent this year. I'd love to know what the I, are we at the point where we've seen something on that to see if that's even close? Because, I mean, it seems to me that all the trends that affect this number are headed in the wrong direction for us. I mean, I think there are more kids in school, there are more kids with significant needs. And there are probably more schools out there with more submission know-how. I know that we hired an expert to help us maximize our submissions, and I I would imagine other schools are kind of following suit, so. And of course, the floor, the four and a half, four and a half times, um, floor just goes higher and higher. So I don't know if, you know, that does seem aggressive, and I, you know, it's great to see that, but I am very aware and um, sensitive to the fact that that might be high.
Thank you, Taylor. Um, RTMFMB, Jack Davis?
Yeah, I'm not so sure that I think it's high. Um, but, um, quick question. Um, while I'm, we have not removed any of the FTEs that were in previous grants back into special ed this year, I just want to confirm that, looking across the grant list on, uh, two twenty-three. And, um, the other thing, because there was a wide discussion about it, is that, um, if you can group everything together, there is a possibility of creating an appendix shadow budget consolidating all of the special ed costs into one place, including the grants for that matter. Um, because we've often said that there's seventeen to eighteen people that are, um, FTEs that are servicing our, uh, district, that if those grants aren't there, are definitely coming back into budget, those spots aren't going away. Anyway, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Jack. RTM Education, Eddie, you still with us?
Yeah, two questions. Um, what for, what are we doing to understand the trend in speech therapy? This is a forty percent increase in three years. If this trend continues, this would mean more than two hundred students in ten years. It isn't clear what the percentage increase in special education students is, increase of twenty-four students is what percentage? But given students leave the system, what are we doing to understand and plan for long-term trends? And then the second question, how many students are outplaced and are they included in our total enrollment numbers? If they are not included, why other districts provide this information by grade?
Thank you, Ed. CDSP?
Sorry. Uh, we have a few questions. Um, we see caseloads broken down by service provider, but each case has a different number of required hours assigned to it. Student A could have one thirty-minute session per six-week cycle. With service provider A, student B could have one forty-five-minute session per six-week cycle. The caseload would look the same for service provider A and service provider B, but service provider B is spending more time with our student. Can we get a breakdown by hour? Um, on page one seventy, um, pupil evaluations is up fifteen thousand, is that enough? What is the average price of evaluations? Um, account twelve zero zero one, the consultants, our Maryland friend and Margie Gillis, continuing their professional development work. Where are the costs associated with them housed? And would it be possible to see a breakdown of cost estimates for each, for PD? Um, and do general education teachers participate in the PD? Um, and then regarding outplacement, unilateral placement, what are the drivers to the legal fees? What percentages, what percentage of legal fees resulted in outplacement, you know, unilateral placement? And then what other alternative programs might the district consider adding to eliminate outplacement? Unilateral placement needs, what might be the cost to build out a program to address needs such as language-based learning disabilities like dyslexia? What savings might the district realize? And what revenue might the district receive? Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. CPAC?
Trisha is here to, uh, for this one. Trisha?
Oh, yes, sorry, I'm starting, and then, um, Jamie's, uh, doing some too, right, Jamie? Um, so, um, we had some, uh, PD questions in general, professional development. If there, um, if there is a way that we could see a breakdown of what the PD, um, money is used for. Um, and are all the new APs at elementary in the PD and RC twenty-four? Um, since the start of the co-teaching model at MMS and DHS, have the new co-top pair has been given PD? Um, and with all the PD needed for the new APs and and other areas, this line has stayed the same, um, should it be increased? And, um, where is the AT in, um, RC twenty-four? I'm not sure where that is, and does that need to be increased with, um, new kids in, uh, special education and there only being one staff person? And OT is always a question we ask about, um, OTs miss a lot because of services, kids miss a lot of OT services because of OTs needing to go to PPTs and meetings. Um, is there enough coverage? And, um, there's a big increase in teacher aides online, eight one seven, uh, eight one seven, but not, we don't see as big of an increase in special ed teachers, so, um, it's a hundred and three thousand. Anyway, can that just be clarified? And, um, the twenty-four kids in a caseload at the DHS seems, um, pretty high. Uh, can teachers be efficient? Uh, should that be less? Thank you.
Duke, can I add on to additional questions, or do you want me to wait until public comment?
No, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, just, uh, two quick questions, I think along, um, the discussion about how we categorize, um, special education. Um, we would like to see, and I did send this one in, uh, breakdown, uh, with the new assistant principals in the elementary schools, between the hours they spend on SDI, PPTs, and then, uh, in working in general education. Um, and the other, uh, question we have is about the, um, Shirley and I had this discussion about, uh, the ESY PPTs have been moved up, um, to early in the year, which does allow for planning, um, when hiring for ESY. But at the same time, uh, we're making decisions about services at the beginning of the year that aren't going to happen until summer. So I guess as we see the cost associated in the staffing, I think it's something we should continue to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Michelle will open up to the public on questions for special ed RC twenty-four.
There are no raised hands at this time.
Great, thank you, Michelle. We'll move on to curriculum, RC nineteen.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Excuse me?
Can we take a five-minute break?
Sure, we have a motion to make a five-minute break. Great, uh, thank you, thank you, Jill. We will, uh, take a quick five-minute break. Thank you. Thank you, Jill.